They don't need it.
It's six thirty, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Is there anyone here for public input?
Good evening, council member. This is Gary from Wake Park. I have a concern of wisdom that I want to share with you. As you know, as you look at these pictures right here, I'm wondering, the first, with the Elwing Library, is there a way, there's empty bone that we could maybe move it? Because I think that the library has outgrown in Wake Park. Going there, you know, it just seems small and clustered or filled. You almost have to go to the same Clough Library. So I'm just wondering, and then the other picture is of the Elringsmoo's Library. And I'm wondering, again, is there a way, are there any empty buildings that are available that already be up to the, do I have to bring this to the library? Or not? Mayor?
No, we don't have any empty buildings for the library. We've, they've asked for a bigger library for a long time. Of course, that costs us money. The library never throws any money into it. So that's, that's city money. Sartell just built a big city facility over there, and their library is about as half the size of a big bathroom, I think. They just have, they don't even have a library over in Sartell. So I'm wondering where the future libraries go. And we've talked about libraries for a long time, but the answer to your question is no, we don't have any building to put a bigger library in there at this time.
You don't?
We, we talked about it.
We did have, it was included in our facility study.
Yeah.
There may be a possibility in the future, and this is all in the future, that depending on what we do with public public safety facility, if that, if the police move out of here, maybe the fire department moves out of here. Who knows? That's, that's to be determined. There could be some room here then. But at this time, we don't have any, any more room.
All right. And then my other concern of wisdom is, you know, now that we're here in the spring of the year, have you thought about putting on government access nine, one eighty-one, excuse me, the opening, the acts that are coming? Because last year you had did that, and I thought that was kind of nice. So you thought about doing that again?
Yep. I've talked to Margie, but we'll mention it to her again to do that. Yep.
Yeah, because I think it's a great idea. All right. And my final thoughts is I am, I am wondering, you know, the city of St. Cloud puts out a magazine like this here, would we have funds for the, and then they mail them, and they also have the Lake Library? Have you ever thought about mayor or council or Shana to do something like this here? Because also our competitor, Stearns County, they put out, that, that one actually comes in my US mail. So I'm wondering, you know, since we don't have the newsletter, have we ever thought about somehow, I know everything costs money. Have we ever thought about doing something like this? You know, you, I'm sure as a, as a public facility, you get a discount from the post office in bulk, don't you?
No.
No.
No?
We do, we are in some, we work with the St. Cloud Bureau.
Convention Bureau.
Convention Bureau, and they do put out a real nice, and they have put out a magazine with all of our stuff in it, so.
We also do our newsletter, but I mean, to your point, it's not a bad idea, I mean, to look at some of those and think if there's some things that we can do to add. The question I think comes as to what's the best way to send that? You know, is that something that could be done online, or, you know, is it something that people need physically in their hands? I think we're always constantly, you know, struggling to determine which is the best avenue for some of that. Because there's a lot of times when newsletters go out and people, some are looking for them, but then others will be like, well, I never heard about that. And it's like, well, did you get the newsletter? Oh, I just threw that away. So I think we're always trying to find ways that we can communicate. And, but I, I, I know that for sure, I have the Stearns County one as well, and it is, it's very nice. They're much larger than we are, so they have a lot more information to put in there. But there are some certain things that we could probably look at to see what we might be able to do to enhance some of those things. It's just a matter of what means of communication. So I, thank you for sharing that. I haven't seen St. Cloud, so that one is a new one too, but.
Because they come out, I think, every quarter. So, yes.
Yeah, the newsletters come out every quarter, so we can always add things to that.
And what's nice about it, when you page through it, the people, the business in the area pay for that book advertisement, so I think that's how.
Part of it comes down to staffing and the time that it takes to put it together. But, so we're trying to make sure that we're hitting the, you know, the large amount of people in that. We also work with Anderson Hughes, and so we're doing more videos to be able to tell our community about different things going on. And I think that's been really effective as well. So we have been trying different ways for communication, but I certainly appreciate all your input, because we certainly can always do better.
And in closing, I want to take this time to, as a resident of Wake Park, Dave, who has done, Officer Dave, our chief, has done a great job here in Wake Park and the community. I appreciate the work that you do, and I hope that you enjoy your retirement. And the new, new chief that's coming in, you have some pretty big shoes to, to fill. I think you'll do a great job, and I'm looking forward for you to serve. And also in closing, is that for Dave, is that open to anyone? And where's it going to be located?
Dave's retirement party is at the ledge. Yes, it is open to the public from three to seven on Thursday, May eighteenth.
All right.
And the State of the City address is Wednesday at the ledge, starting at eleven thirty for lunch for part of the chamber meeting, but I think the State of the City will start at about noon.
Wow, that sounds like fun. All right, I appreciate your time, and I will go from there. Thank you, and good evening.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary. Is there anyone else here for public input? Anyone else? Anyone else? Review and approve council agenda.
Moved to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approve four seventeen twenty-three local board and appeals and equalization meeting minutes. Item B, approve four seventeen twenty-three council meeting minutes. Item C, approve electrical inspector contract. Item D, approve public works seasonal hire. Item E, approve purchase request for RWAAC CH twenty-two thousand, or two hundred and one H two vacuum. Item F, approve police sergeant job description. Item G, approve promotional process for police sergeant. And item H, approve street painting.
I'd like to pull F.
F?
Yes.
Do you want to move to approve A, B, C, D, E, G, H?
I'll move to approve though.
I'll second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Mike?
Well, and F, if you go through what the requirements are here, when you get down to the education and experience portion, you're dropping it down to three years of law enforcement or supervisory experience. I believe that we should probably just go at five years of law enforcement experience within the department. Other supervisory experience, it does hold some value, however. Law enforcement is a whole different game when it comes to supervisory experience. And three years just doesn't seem to be long enough to turn into a supervisory. Being an officer at one time myself, three years is, you're just, you're still green.
So realize that's the minimum qualifications. All it does is really open up the door to be able to consider more candidates. It doesn't change anything as far as doing that, and I think that's really, this was something that Tony had actually brought up and felt that this was something that would be a good move for us. And, and to be honest with you, I think that more departments are looking to go that way, just to be able to open up that candidate pool. Not always is the one with the most experience.
I think when you come into a supervisor in a PD, experience is a great thing for someone to be that supervisor.
I don't.
And the only way you gain your experience is through the years that you've worked up until that position becomes available. Three years is, and I hate, you know, I'll say again, I think you're still green.
That three years there, if you turn that to five, still doesn't mean anything, because the other part of it says other. Listen to me, it says other supervisory experience. I could come here and be six months here, but I could have had fifteen years at AT&T, IBM, whatever.
But that's a whole different type of supervisory, and, you know, review being on it, a police department.
But this doesn't, this doesn't differentiate between law enforcement and the IBM supervisor. This just says three years of supervisory experience.
Or, no, it says or other supervisor.
That's what I'm saying.
And that's why I say we should probably just remove that.
You're.
At the, at the minimum, remove other supervisory.
Well, the one thing that I'm going to tell you, I think, is, is that in today's world, with the way that recruitment and retention is going, you're going to have a very difficult time finding those individuals with that kind of experience. It doesn't mean that you're not going to hire the most qualified position, person for the job. But I think what we wanted to do was to be a little bit more open and a little bit more flexible with that, so that we can actually create a position that has a little bit of promotional opportunities in for the department. But what it also does is it really just does make sure that we're considering other things. There's other type of supervisory experience that could make a person very qualified for the position. And I think the supervisory part, where, depending on where you're working, there is a lot of that. So I, I did check with a couple of other, of the other cities, and I think that.
What cities were those?
Sauk Rapids and Sartell. And then I talked with our consultant with Baker Tilly as well. And I think they felt more like that three year was, three years is where it was. Sauk Rapids is five, and Sartell is actually, I think, two to three. So there's a little bit of a difference, but I think they're all looking at the same thing. So just remember, all, all you're doing is expanding your candidate pool. You're still going to be hiring the person that's the most qualified for the job.
You know, Mike, your thoughts, maybe good twenty years ago, when we had two hundred applications for.
Yeah, but we're not talking, we're talking about a promotion within the department most of the time.
Well, my point is.
Sergeant here, we're not talking about a regular application for employment.
The younger the staff gets, the more opportunities we have to give them. So.
You know, I think we also felt that it gave them an opportunity to interview through a process.
Which is also educational for them. Yes.
If I could, if I could share too, that right now we'd have about three candidates that have, or five years of experience. We were hoping for a broader pool than that. Right now, and one of those is our canine, which, quite frankly, it's difficult to be a supervisor and a canine handler both. So five plus years is a very limited pool for us to be able to select from. Other cities, Golden Valley is four years, St. Cloud, three years, Burnsville, three years. The opportunity for a young officer to interview and compete is not a lost thing. No guarantee that they're going to get it, obviously, but it's going to come down to the strength of their resume. Their other experience could be military, could be whatever, that is going to contribute to them to being a successful, successful supervisor. So, you know, five years is not a magic, magic pill in my mind. You can look at the whole person, their education, and all of the, all of the above. So I don't think for us, for us, three years is not outside the industry norms. And, and again, it's not necessarily meaning that we're going to appoint somebody with three years of experience. It, it might be that, but they've got some other strengths going for them that would say they're the best candidate for the job.
It could be solely personality or something that is. Yeah, Mike, I don't agree. I'll make a motion to approve it how it is, how it reads.
I'll second that.
Further discussion.
Well, I think if you would remove the other experience with three years of law enforcement, that would be a better read for a department, or our department.
Well, I can honestly say, Mike, I was never a police officer or have any idea how that whole operation runs. I rely on a chief to do that. So I do know other supervisory experience should apply, because it's something I'm familiar with. And I understand that you're managing people, you're managing time, you're managing the materials, they need to do their job. It's all part of it.
It's also. You, you could be faced too with potential of, you, you want to have a strong eligibility list for a sergeant, because reality is, you could have three promotions coming off, if you don't have three candidates, you only have three, maybe two candidates. You want to broaden the pool and, and, and give those younger officers, yes. And I understand what you're saying, Mike, you know, but we have gotten very young very fast. And we just don't have the candidate pool to be able to meet the needs that we're going to have going forward, if you limit, if you, if you say it five years or more. And that's going to put us at a, at a disadvantage.
I'm giving up the five years just for the removal of other supervisory experience. Three years of law enforcement experience could be enough to build.
We limit ourselves so badly that we may have to have applicants from the outside. We can't then promote one from within.
There you go.
What if them two or three don't apply?
Further discussion. I don't like it. I got a motion and a second to adopt it as proposed. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Port one. All right, regular agenda. Item A, consider resolutions and MOUs for summer scheduling.
Oh, that's me. Sorry. I'm trying to get my, so last year we did our first trial at having some summer scheduling, where we had the, some of the departments that were able to do this for Public Works, Police Admin, and those are the two that require council action, and city administration did it as well. Our hours of operation for city admin and police admin never changed. It was just really flexing schedules where staff were able to work ten hour days. And in Public Works, that was something that they had an interest in. Their schedule was four ten hour days, and then they still have the on-call person working on Fridays. So this is something that the employees had requested again. I think it was a really good, worked out really well. It's, it's a, it's a great employee motivator thing when, when we've been able to work through these things from a department head level, when we've talked about it with our management team. We haven't really seen too many issues with that. I think most have figured it out. My staff have figured out their own schedules, and it's worked out really well. So what's before you then for consideration to do this? Because the public, Police Admin and the maintenance are under a collective bargaining units. They would, you would be required to approve the resolution and the memorandum, and two of the, they'd have to be two separate motions. So one would be for the non-licensed essential, and then for Police Admin, and then the other one would be for the maintenance workers.
So through all the departments, it's going to run the same as last year?
Yeah.
Basically.
And there's some, like in Police, it's worked, it's actually worked out fairly well, because there are some that still like their eight hour shifts, so they have that ability to do that. And now in Police, they've got, they're at a full staff strength with, and then, so that's given them a little bit more flexibility, so it's really worked out well. My staff too, we're out of, we're at full strength. Some are taking off days on Wednesdays, so they kind of figured out their own schedule, and it worked out fine, and it's worked out well for Public Works, and employees love it.
And our new police chief has the same sentiments?
I do.
All right.
The only question I have is, I just want to make sure that we're staffed five days a week, whether it be in administration and the departments that want the four ten.
Yep.
Are we going to be staffed five days a week?
We were last year, and I never got one complaint from any citizen. No, that's what I'm saying. We never got one last year.
Public Works has, they still have their, their on-call rotation, and that person is on and works on that Friday.
On call, I'm talking about.
They work, no, no, they're physically here that Friday.
That Friday.
That person that is, has that on-call rotation works in eight hour, eight, eight hour, eight hour.
Crew of people.
No, one.
Just one. That person for that pay period works in eight hour week, or an eight hour day for that pay period, I would assume.
It's worked.
It worked last year, so.
So what's the first motion?
So if you want to do the first one for the non-licensed, yeah, that's the Police Admin.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passes unanimously, and X one is memorandum understanding for maintenance workers bargaining unit Teamsters Local Third, three twenty.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. NMB, emergency repair, Park Press Lift Station.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, in front of you tonight, I have a request. Park Press Lift Station, down off of Sixth Avenue, or Eighth Avenue, south there, or north, excuse me. We had some issues with a failed check valve, and not to try to get into too much detail, but basically, the lift station's a huge wet well. It's about twenty-five feet deep, big tank. Two pipes run down to it. At the bottom of it, there's a boot, sits on a concrete slab, and then it L's off to a pump and a check valve. Basically, that's what's in there, and there's two each. So last year, we had a, we had an issue with a failed check valve down there. So this is not a typical, easy task for, for our staff to do, so we hire a specialized contractor that deals with, with this type of work. When they got in there, they found that the, the bottom boot was deteriorating away, so the support was minimal. And so with that, Dale's been working for the last months trying to get quotes and get the, the emergency fix that I, that's what I'm calling it, corrected down there. With that, he was only able to get one, one contractor to quote. And, and generally, it's, it's like anything else out there. These are specialized contractors, so they know that, the other ones out there know that we work with one. So they're, they say, oh, yep, we'll get you a quote in a couple of weeks, we'll get you, and he keeps beating the doors down, and they never do. So knowing full well that, why are they going to waste their time? Because they know that they probably wouldn't get the job. I don't know. So anyway, we do have a situation. It does need to be corrected as soon as possible. And so the quote here is for twenty-five thousand dollars for them to come in and put new piping, new boots, restabilize the bottom down there. We lost a pump, pump number one, I believe, or two, doesn't matter, in nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, so we had to replace that pump and motor. This one is starting to show signs of failure. It's over twenty years old. So with that, they gave us a quote to change it out while they're in there doing the work for another twelve thousand dollars. So I'm looking at a thirty-seven thousand dollar expenditure to, to rehab this lift station, to get it back up to where it needs to be and out of danger. So, and this would have to come out of our reserves in the sewer fund.
All right, Council, questions, comments?
Moved to approve repairing the pump station for thirty-seven thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Item C, additional police officer cadet hire under Pathways to Policing Program.
Mayor, members of the council, we, and I shared a letter, we were awarded a grant to hire one cadet under the Pathways to Policing Program. That includes salary and benefits for that individual to attend a four-month school at Hennepin Tech. We do have one other applicant that we're looking at, and we will be doing interviews for Pathways to Policing here in the next week or so, I believe, with the Civil Service Board. But we, and while we do not have a grant for a second cadet, it might represent an opportunity for us to be able to, to staff another opening when, when that, those two cadets actually complete their training. And I, I guess my thought was or is that because our 2023 budget is calling for twenty-two sworn, that's what we're, the level that we're budgeted to, we have not been staffed at that level this year, and likely, well, it's hard to know, probably won't be for a good share of this year. So the, the, the savings that we would have on our, our personnel costs for, for this year, if some of that could be used or reallocated, if you will, to, to provide the, the salary and benefits for a second cadet, should we be successful in identifying them and, and bringing them on board to fill a future position?
It seems like a logical way for us, because it worked already once, so.
Yeah, we, this is to be the second, second grant that we've gotten with Pathways to Policing. Last time was one, they're called cadets, I guess. This, we got another one, but again, this would be for potentially two. One of which should be paid for by a state grant, the other obviously would come out of our.
Payroll saving.
Our payroll, our budget, right. But there should be funds. I'm not, we're not asking for money over and above our, well, we've already got budget for salary. There should be plenty left, because we have been running short staffed or not fully staffed.
In that original, or I should say the first time we did this, there is a certain number of years commitment by these cadets too, isn't there?
I don't, I don't believe so. What, what.
So they could.
They've changed it. This, there's, basically, you apply directly to the agency. They don't, before it used to be you applied to one department, and then several had a chance to compete for your, you know, for that, for those cadets. Now, basically, each department is responsible for recruiting their old, their own candidates under the Pathways to Policing Program.
Which actually is better for us, because then they're dedicated to us.
Correct. Well, that's my point, is if we're, now we're going to pay for it with city taxpayers' money, should there try to be a commitment?
And they should be committed to us, but.
I mean, even if.
Can't force them here. I, I would hate to keep somebody that says, I don't, I don't want to be here, but I got a commitment of three years.
Right. Well, I mean, it's.
You know, it's so, so tough to attract people, any way you look at it. I hate to put any restrictions like that on them, even though I understand where you're coming from.
Well, I've had employment contracts before, where I go to trainings or whatever, and I leave within six months, I pay that money back. So it's not uncommon.
No, it is not. You're right.
It's not, but.
How many openings do we presently have? Two?
Three.
Three?
Three if you count mine.
How many applications have we had in the last month and a half?
Right now, we have one, non-traditional or Pathways. We have an internal candidate for Pathways, and we have one for a traditional hire.
Still behind.
So it's, it's, I have not seen it this, like this for us.
Council, what's your wishes?
I'd rather have them see some kind of contract length, but I'll move to approve either way.
I'll second that.
Further discussion.
Well, can you verify which way you're going?
Approve it as it is.
Work on that for the future.
Yeah, a good point, yeah.
And the other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Probes bills.
Moved to pay the bills.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. I do have a proclamation here, uh, recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month, whereas mental health is part of overall, overall health. And whereas, on in five adults experience a mental health problem in any given year, and whereas approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of fourteen and three-quarters by the age of twenty-four. And whereas, suicide is the tenth leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause among young adults. And ninety percent of people who die by suicide had shown symptoms of mental health condition, according to interviews with family, friends, and medical professionals. And whereas, long delays sometimes decades often occur between the time symptoms first appear and when the individual gets help. And whereas, early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery. And whereas, it is important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to get help when it's needed. Whereas, every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. Whereas, public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now therefore be resolved that I, Richard E. Miller, Mayor of the City of Way Park, do hereby proclaim May twenty-twenty-three as Mental Health Awareness Month in Way Park, Minnesota. To shine a light on mental illness and fight discrimination, provide support, educate the public, and advocate to care. Alright, and I have a, thank you for being a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I have a member from Terabent Refuge for the donation that we gave them this year. And also a thank you letter from Mokosa for the donation we gave them this year. Shawna?
Just a reminder that, um, we have the State of the City address, um, on Wednesday, um, out at the ledge. Um, the State of the City address will start at about noon. Um, for any members of the public that are interested, um, feel free to join us. Um, park in the parking lot and come up to the stage.
East parking lot.
East parking lot. And then, um, also, we have Dave's retirement party, um, that is scheduled for, and you're gonna tell me East parking lot again, Bill? No?
Back parking lot.
Back parking lot for Dave's? Alright. From three to seven, uh, this Thursday, May eighteenth. Um, anyone from the public that would like to join us and wish him well, um, are welcome to do so. And I just wanna thank Dave for, uh, your fifteen years of service to the City of Way Park. It has been a pleasure to work with you, and I'm very excited for you and the, the new opportunities, and, uh, congratulations.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.
I'll have money to buy a coffee, gosh darn it.
Well, if I could, if you wouldn't mind, Mayor, just, uh, I, I'd appreciate just a few minutes if I could. You know, it's hard to believe it's been fifteen years, but, um, this has been a great place to work, and I really appreciate the opportunity to have served the city as its police chief. And, and, uh, you know, for Shawna, I, I've, uh, I've never had a boss for fifteen years, and, and, um, you're one of the best.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I didn't think I'd get. But, you know, and, and I wanna thank the Council too. I mean, I think, uh, the stability that we had with, with, you know, Shawna and members of the Council, three of the five of you have been here the whole time. I've been here. And, and I've really appreciated that, and Ken's been so involved, and I've gotten to know Sean too. But I, I appreciate that, that continuity was, was huge over the last fifteen years. Um, my fellow department heads, I'm definitely gonna miss our Tuesday afternoon meetings, and we did a, I think, a lot of good, good things for the city, a lot of good planning went on there. But, uh, again, I just wanna thank the Council for, for their support. I always tried to give kind of reasoned proposals to the Council, and, and your support for, uh, me and, and ours department and our, our officers has been great. I, uh, very excited about the future. I think with the, the new, uh, police facility coming, uh, it's gonna be a great addition for the city, and my only regret is I won't be able to work in it. But, uh, it'll, it'll be a great facility whenever, wherever it gets built. And, and, um, I wanna thank the officers too. This is National Peace Officer Memorial Day. And I just think of all the officers that I've worked under me over the years. I really appreciate their service as well. And I'm very excited for Tony. You, you made the right choice, and he's gonna do a great job for you, so. Um, I just appreciate the time to, to say some thank you, so, appreciate it.
Alright, thanks again, Dave.
Alright.
Alright, is there anything else? Dave? Engineer Dave.
Bill? Well, I've got a few things to say about Dave, if you got.
No.
John?
I won't do that to you here.
John, you got anything?
No, sir.
Alright, well, we gave Dave his chance, so. How about our new chief? Gary? Okay, thanks for coming.
Real quickly, uh, where is this ledge located?
The amphitheater?
The ledge amphitheater. The ledge amphitheater?
Yeah.
It's out right next to the Public Works building, the new Public Works building.
Right behind Menards.
I can put an address on TV because some people wanna come to that, and I did not know where it was, so if you could do that, I appreciate it. On one-eight-one. Thank you.
Okay, yep. Got anything? Alright, then we are adjourned at seven oh-five.